Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, and it's 7:00 PM. In an effort to minimize the spread of COVID-19, Governor Newsom issued an executive order that temporarily suspended requirements of the Brown Act. Given this executive order, the Laguna Niguel City Council chambers are closed to the public until further notice. Members of the public are strongly encouraged to observe the city council meeting live on Cox Cable Channel 853 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99 or online via YouTube livestream. That can be accessed on a city website. Members of the public may submit comments on any agenda item or on any item not on the agenda by email to thecityclerk@egomez@cityoflagunaniguel.org. All comments received prior to discussion of the agenda item will be read into the record up to the time limit of three minutes. Any portion of the comment not read out loud due to time restrictions will still be included in their written record. City of Laguna Niguel thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Madam Clerk, if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rains? Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Genaway?
Present.
Mayor Protam Menagar?
Present.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember John Mark Jennings to do the invocation as well as Councilmember Rains for the pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the gift of public communication and government and participation. We ask that you be present in the lives of those that are suffering from the consequences of COVID-19, that those are struggling with their lives, with their jobs, and with their children, and that we ask that you provide abundant peace in that world. Be with us tonight as we go through this agenda and do the people's work. Give us our own version of peace to calm the nerves of things that happen in our city and give us the wisdom to try to make decisions that honor you and honor our residents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, councilmembers. All right, our next item is public communications. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each public comment. City Clerk Gomez, do you have any public comments to read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, I have one comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This message is from Mr. Robert Bachelor.
I have lived in Laguna Niguel for over 30 years. Today at 10 o'clock AM, my two granddaughters, ages five and two and a half, talked to a nice police officer by Seminole Park in El Niguel Heights. My granddaughters thanked the police officer for keeping us safe. The officer was friendly, polite, and enjoyed our visit. I would appreciate it if you would read my remarks at the next city council meeting and send a copy of this email to the appropriate offices. We are lucky to live in such a great city and have an active, caring group of police officers, keeping our city protected. We are also appreciative of all the city staff and employees that serve our great city. Respectfully, Robert Bachelor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, public communication is now closed. Moving on to the consent calendar. All right, items one through nine, are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussion? Councilmember Rains? Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember?
Mayor Davies, I need to abstain on item number, rather, on the check register, item number, see, that's tab number one, page five, vendor 1220, payment 1740 to Dale Marketing. That's my husband's employer.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Just one quick question for Chief McDaniel, item number nine.
All right, great. Also, do we have, City Clerk, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
No, Mayor, there are no comments.
Okay, great.
Move the consent calendar.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that does include the abstention. Wonderful. Okay, let's go to item nine. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This quick question is for Chief McDaniel. With regard to this contract, I just wanted to ask you if you explored any potential discounts because of COVID-19 and the potential ramification of the schools not being fully open so that we would be utilizing the services of the subject contractor.
Yes, this was done, we are aware that that school may be done from telecommuting-type design, but what happened last year was those folks did not charge us for the last three months of the contract. They are only charging for the days and the hours that they do actually work. That'll be the same going forward. They are aware that the school has discussed alternate schedules, and we will have to review that, but we wanted the contract to be in place just so we had something to work from should that be the case. But we will absolutely not be charged for the hours that they do not work.
Very good, I appreciate your explanation. I'd like to make a motion to move this item.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion moved. Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearing. Our next item is public hearing number, item number one. This is a public hearing to consider 2020 weed abatement program authorizing abatement of weeds on private property. Community Development Director Orduna, please provide a staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Senior Planner Eric List will be providing the presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. After the April 7th City Council Resolution Approval to declare weeds on certain private properties a nuisance, staff notified the property owners of the June 8th deadline to complete the removal of weeds within 100 feet of any structures. Property owners were offered the opportunity to have their property abated by a city contractor and billed for the service. To date, three property owners have requested this service. Out of the 250 properties noticed, two remain out of compliance. 23901, Oyerger Lane, is an undeveloped single-family home lot in Kite Hill, HOA. 29391, Villa Portola, is a vacant single-family home off of Auto Lanto. Staff made multiple attempts to contact the property owners, including posting the properties. Neither owner responded to the hearing notice. A draft resolution has been prepared for the city council consideration to direct Community Development Director to commence with the abatement process and keep record of the abatement costs. A public hearing is scheduled for the August 4th. City council meeting to consider filing any unpaid costs with the county assessor. This concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any questions before we go to see if there's a public hearing open? Otherwise, I'll come back for council comments. Okay, great. Let's open public hearing. The public hearing is now open to receive testimony from the public. City Clerk Gomez, are there any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor, no comments.
All right, we're going to close public hearing. All right, councilmembers, any questions or comments?
One quick call.
Yes, please.
Great. I just want to say thank you to the residents that did comply. I realize we live in a very rich soil area, and those weeds grow tall and they grow aggressively. I also want to say thank you to the city because due to the GOAT program, we had tremendous success with that, and so it takes a combined effort of everybody working together. I think two exceptions I could probably deem to be a success, and it sounds like we have a strong plan in place to take care of those, and I understand that this might not be the first time we've had to do that. So with that, unless there's other comments, I'd move the item.
I second it.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion moved. Our next item is public hearing number, item two. This is public hearing to consider proposed urgency ordinance number 2020-206 and ordinance number 207, establishing sidewalk vending regulations consistent with Senate Bill 946, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, and adoption of resolution number 2020-1334, establishing and adopting fees and charges for sidewalk vending permits. Community Director Orduna, please provide a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Contract Planner Amber Gregg will be providing the presentation for this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and fellow city councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me tonight. We have two items before you. The first one is the sidewalk vending regulations, and these are consistent with California state law SB 946. So to dive right into the background, SB 946, also known as the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, was adopted in 2018 and went into effect on January 1 of 2019. Basically, it prohibits cities from banning sidewalk vending. Currently, the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code does prohibit sidewalk vending outright, and so in order to be compliant with state law, we do need to amend our municipal code. So the sidewalk vending program is a part of an overall Laguna Niguel Municipal Code comprehensive update that we have been working on since it was initiated in 2018, and those amendments were also supported by the Strategic Action Plan in order to bring the city in compliance with all of those requirements. So the proposed sidewalk vending program is a citywide program that covers all rights of way. So in drafting this, city staff and the city attorney's office have prepared the proposed ordinances, which are first and foremost consistent with state law. They also provide regulations to safely allow vendors on public sidewalks, and the ordinance is also contain findings detailing the health, safety, and welfare consideration for all the proposed requirements in the ordinance. So to give a brief outline of the program, the ordinance does require a city-issued permit, and the purpose of that is to ensure that important health, safety, and operating standards are met. Second, it does identify all the requirements of a city application, and in that application, we're going to require proof of a California seller's permit, for example, that's required for tax purposes. If you're serving food, you also need Orange County health requirements to make sure that you're serving in a safe manner. There is a requirement to provide general insurance, and that's in case there is something with the cart that causes injury or damage to property, so the city's not liable, as well as general description of the activities that that vendor's proposing, for example, locations, times, and that's to make sure that we have a clear path to travel compliant with ADA requirements. Another section is vendor operating requirements, and that details all the different specifications on where a vendor can be consistent with health and safety requirements in ADA. And then finally, it covers enforcement provisions to address if violations should arise as part of these vending activities. So the proposed action before you tonight does include three different adoptions, and the first one is an urgency ordinance, and that urgency ordinance basically mimics the regular ordinance that's also contained in there. And the purpose of that is because there are potential health and safety concerns with this, that urgency ordinance would basically be in effect immediately. The regular ordinance would go into effect 31 days after adoption, so after the second reading, 31 days from that is when the ordinance would be in effect. The final item is a fee resolution, and that identifies a permit fee of $190, and that would also go into effect immediately. And the purpose of that $190 is to recapture the cost of processing that application, which amounts to about two and a half hours of review and processing of those permits. So staff recommends that the city council approve the street vending regulations as stated in the staff report, and adopt urgency ordinance 2020-206, introduce regular ordinance 2020-207, and adopt ordinance 2020-134. And staff and the city attorney are available to answer any questions.
Great. Council, I'm going to actually go to public hearing first, and then we can just go back to council comments. At this time, City Clerk Gomez, are there any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to close public hearing and move on to council comments. Councilmember Genaway?
Comments? Okay. Questions or comments?
Both.
Okay, well, I have comments. Okay. This is the part of the meeting where I want to reenact that Verizon commercial that says, "Do you hear me? Do you hear me now?" And say, "Yes, we hear you, Laguna Niguel." We had so many emails, we had hundreds of emails and phone calls to City Hall regarding the street vendors. Our residents are very concerned about the street vendors and the safety of the entire community, the vendor and the customers and the passerby's. So this is very responsive to what the residents of our community are concerned about. Thank you, Director Orduna and your staff for bringing this forward to us and being so thorough in it. I know that this is, we're taking this because of public safety, and the location criteria and the permitting process creates and supports an environment for the vendor to conduct business in a manner that is safe for the vendor, it is safe for the customer, the passerby's, the drivers in our community, and the community as a whole. And all of those need to be taken into consideration, especially when something is happening on public property, which could be a liability for the city. So we want to keep everyone safe, and the criteria in here, I think, addresses that very well. And just as insurance or certain permits, such as health permits or resale permits, are necessary for the brick and mortar stores or contractors to ensure the safety of the public, they are necessary for the vendors as well. So I think you have a very thorough vetting process for the community as a whole when you go through this. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rains?
Obviously, our strategic plan states that the most important thing that our city finds is public safety, so the public safety of our residents, as well as anyone doing business in our city, is very important. With that being said, one of the concerns that I have is there is, in this ordinance, it's requiring an insurance policy, and it's different than insurance policies that other businesses might be required to have in their business. So my question is, would we be proactive in being able to provide information as to where they could receive this insurance, and would it be a cost prohibitive item for them? The original ordinance was written, obviously, for immigrants and low socioeconomic residents or members of our community to be able to have a way to make an income. So just being fair, I just wanted to understand what that would be. Thank you.
In the event that any applicant can indicate or prove that they're unable to obtain insurance, I'm sure that the staff and the risk manager can provide some assistance to people to find that appropriate insurance. If we find as a routine practice that that is not possible, we can certainly look at adjustments, but I think starting out with a good, basic insurance provision and requirements is in everybody's interest, and we will certainly adapt and adjust if needed.
I believe Community Development Director Orduna has some additional information about the insurance requirements, too.
Sure. We did a bit of research just to really quantify the actual impact to a vendor. It looks like at the upper range, this type of general liability insurance would cost about $40 a month. It could be less, but that would be the absolute highest. And in terms of availability, this is a very widely available type of insurance that can be readily obtained. So this should not be a significant burden for the vendors. The majority of the cities that have adopted this type of ordinance in South Orange County include this type of requirement, and again, it goes to liability issues for the city and the vendor.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. I think this is a great opportunity for us to open our, you know, city to allow business to be done as usual, but at the same time, address the safety of all of our residents. So with that being said, there's a lot of different vendors that may choose to do this, so I'm glad that we're taking the precautions and updating our code so that it is in line with the state law. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This all stems from SB 946. I've made very little, I haven't hidden the fact that I didn't like the law, I thought it was a bad law. It's one of those California one-size-fits-all laws that says that whatever's good for every city in the state must be good for us as well. It puts us in a difficult situation. It places us at odds with our residents, with vendors, with our current businesses that rely on, you know, consistent traffic and flow, and we obviously want to support those for not only the tax reasons, but just because we, these are our friends and neighbors that operate those businesses. Many instances, the friends and neighbors might be the vendors, too, so it's not always mutually exclusive like that, but now we're forced into a position of having to make that judgment call. I evaluate most legislation by extrapolating it out to its logical absurd extreme and see what that looks like to determine whether or not I think that that's a good law. And so in this one, we could allow every open space of road and sidewalk in the city, every 45 inches, as long as it isn't within 500 feet of a school, you could, every 45 inches, you could have another vendor, and imagine what that would look like, and they could sell anything they want to under this law. And under state law, we can't permit them, or it wasn't required to be permitted, and now we are forced to be the sort of onerous body and apply that permitting process and do all that. So I start that with the position that I really don't think this body would be entertaining anything like this right now, absent something like SB 946 having passed. That being said, it's law of the state of California, we're going to do our thing, and we're going to comply. Having said that, when I look at the proposed ordinance and the purposes and findings, I call the council's attention to item D, and if you would, look at that on the first page of the ordinance. It gives a recitation about why we're doing this and to support, facilitate entrepreneurship and economic opportunity for people to support themselves, and I get that, that's the basis behind SB 946. It is not the reason we're here today. We're here today to pass it because we have to pass it. I don't adopt section D, I don't think that's exactly true. In fact, I think it hurts entrepreneurship, because if I'm a vendor and I want to sell pizza today, I can go park myself in front of every pizza place in town and sell my own pizza for half the price of the pizza inside, and suddenly I've got an entrepreneurship dilemma. So I don't think that's a good way to do it. It's not a good way to run a city, it doesn't, it isn't in any way the Laguna Niguel way if that means something. So I'm against it. I would encourage, if we're going to do this, that we consider removing item number D, purpose and finding number D from that. I don't think it needs to be replaced with anything. I mean, the rest of it goes on from items A through U with other reasons why we are going to do it, and I do, I've read all of these in some great length and looked them up and had a rather long meeting today with staff to go through them all, and I can be realistically talked into all of them except for D. Sorry, Councilmember Genaway, you have a question? I'm happy to entertain it.
Well, I have a question after you're finished. I'd like to, if Attorney Ennis would let us know if there's a basis for having that in here, maybe so that we're complying with the law.
And for the public, do you want to just read that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's well, thank you, and those are well taken. I did talk with a city attorney today, and I appreciate his input. Section D says, "The city council finds that the establishment of sidewalk vending program will benefit the city as a whole by facilitating entrepreneurship and providing economic opportunity for the people to support themselves and their families, and by contributing to a diversity of food options and lively streets." I disagree with about 90% of that, and I don't think it's the reason why it's in front of this body, so I'm not making that finding. If we vote on it, I'll consider my vote in light of that, but I just don't think it's right. I don't think it's really why we're considering it, and I would encourage my colleagues to take it out. Just a little bit more insight on some of the other ones. I wanted to make sure that on item K, which is on page two, this one deals with that one of the reasons for this is that it promotes public health and safety, and so I ask comments about why that is and what are we doing to ensure that, and it uses some rather furtive language there. And I was told that it's part of the permitting process, is that you're required to have a permit from OC Health, and so therefore that makes sense. So originally, I was concerned that our permitting process wasn't robust enough to make a determination about whether or not it protected the public health and safety against health problems, but because it requires a permit, I'm told that it does, so that's fine. Item M was one that I, we talked with staff at some great length today about this being within 500 feet of a school, and I wanted to make clear that there wasn't a time restriction on that, that if elsewhere in this document, it says that the prohibition goes from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, or 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, depending on whether it's close to a residential neighborhood. And those specifically do not apply to section M, and that says that the city council finds that vending within 500 feet of schools impacts pedestrian and vendor safety due to overcrowding on sidewalks, which results in schoolchildren and their caretakers walking in the street along with sidewalk to keep moving forward. There isn't a restriction on time, there isn't a restriction on whether or not the school is open at that time, so this will apply, notwithstanding whether or not the schools happen to be shuttered at the moment that the vendor wanted to pop up. My initial concern was that because we had an 8:00 restriction and kids show up to school at 7:30 or 7:45, that you could have 50 vendors on the sidewalk selling teddy bears before they go in, and that's not something that I personally would want, so I think this prohibition on schools is fine, it's reasonable, it's not overly burdensome, and I think it's one of those things that we can easily get past. With that note, and just for the public record, I'm noting that that's, that there is no time or openness restriction on the schools built into that. Also, on page 15 of this, I learned something about the municipal code. It's in-depth and long, but in one section, it provides definitions, and one of the definitions is of the definition peddler, and peddler basically is anybody who travels from place to place to sell things or sits still for a minute and sells things. So we're adding the definition of sidewalk vendor into the definition of peddler, but in section 51, I believe it's 27, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, but in one of the sections, we're adding this as an also prohibitive act. So although it's included in peddler, it's also being separately dealt with, and that's because there are other restrictions later on in the municipal code that deal with peddlers, and I think this is, I was initially concerned that it was duplicative and might cause confusion, but having talked with the city attorney, I'm told that there's a purpose for that, and it makes sense, and that satisfied that curiosity. So the last one I wanted to point out is, I made a promise, and I like to try to keep them if I can, and one of the promises that I made was that I wouldn't unduly impose any fees on anyone, absent some good reason to the contrary. The fee proposed for this application is $190, and while that doesn't seem so high in the scheme of the types of budgets that we deal with, it can be quite a reach for some people. Fees, in my mind, look a whole lot like taxes, and I'm against those when they're unnecessary. I don't think that the, well, back up and not say it that way, the justification for the fee is that it would consume approximately two hours' worth of city staff time, and therefore, that's roughly the amount of money that we're trying to recapture. I don't always buy that premise that just because we're incurring time, that we have to recapture that money back from the residents, and my position on that would be, is that that's baked into the taxes that we already pay, and we've already hired the employee and the employee's there, and that's the service that we provide. So justifying it on the two hours, while it makes perfect sense, I think is unnecessary. So my preference would also be that this be a no-charge permit. I don't know that we're trying to stop people from doing it because they want to pay or don't want to pay $190, if that's something that'd entertain the rest of either staff or the rest of the council to voice, but from my standpoint, it's just another fee, it's just another charge, and I don't think we need it. So I'm generally in favor of this, one because I have to be because of SB 946, but I'm also willing to support it if we can remove D and remove the $190 fee with the caveats that I've also expressed. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Attorney, you're taking notes here if we get to this motion with that. I've got some comments on this as well. I've got, obviously, again, this is SB 946. This was, I believe it was a law that was authored through Los Angeles and obviously through Sacramento, and again, one size doesn't fit all. Laguna Niguel is not Los Angeles. But my, a couple of my concerns, again, we're talking local control, this is where it's at. Obviously, this bill, though, I look at it, this was put through before COVID, and I look at where we're at now with COVID, and all of the guidelines that all of our businesses, all of our restaurants have to follow, and now when you have someone, we're going to put somebody as a vendor sidewalk vendor, what's going to stop social gathering? Them standing in lines? Perhaps you are, you know, selling something in regards to food, and pretty soon you've got a gathering, you've got, are they going to have down the sidewalk places, because this is where you have to stand six feet? Who's going to be monitoring that? What are the guidelines they're doing? Are they going to have a shield? I mean, this is a whole different thing we have to look at. Just, we require this on our businesses here, this should be required here, and that's why this law right now, you know, it just counteracts really what we're being told right now in order to make sure that it's safe for our community. And so I do have a concern with this. So are we able to put guidelines on this, just like the governors put guidelines on our businesses?
I believe that this will require any sidewalk vendor to comply with all applicable laws, and to the extent that the California Department of Public Health imposes a guidance and criteria for the operation of outdoor retail sales, then they would be subject to those restrictions. So by the way the ordinance is drafted, they will be subject to other laws that apply
Okay, and with those safety standards, who is then enforcing those safety standards?
Those are currently enforced, I believe, mostly by the counties in the state. They take the public health officer orders from Sacramento, and then they carry out enforcement.
So really, it won't be our code enforcement staff going by and checking on it. It'll be a matter of if someone calls and complains saying that they don't think that they're following the rules, then we go and then we contact Orange County, and then they come down and check it out. Is that the way it falls?
Correct. So our code enforcement is out to enforce our local, our municipal code. But with regard to COVID, there's two different things. There's the county, and now the state has enforced and put out what they're calling strike teams to go out and make sure there's compliance with, so it's twofold in terms of making sure that there's compliance with all the public health orders.
So with these strike teams, and they're coming up through Sacramento, I understand that, are they, are they from Orange County? Then does Orange County contact the strike team, or how does that work?
They're working a little bit independently, and this is my understanding. It changes every day, so.
And then we don't know what, how much staff they have?
They don't tell us where they come from.
Right. Do we have a number, then, we would call, perhaps if somebody called and complained?
We can call the state.
We've got like a strike team phone number?
Mostly what we do is call the county first. If we got a complaint, we would refer them to the county. But the state is also sending out teams to check in communities to make sure businesses are following the law. But if we get a complaint, our first call's to the county.
Okay, and then my other question, just to clarify, anyone can come in from any area and set up in our city? Or do they have to be a resident?
No, anyone can come in. You don't have to be a resident.
They can come in any, from any city, any state, anywhere they want?
Mm-hmm.
So that means they would be taking business away from our business owners, especially right now with COVID-19 and how hard everyone is doing, correct? They could be.
Yes, residency is not a requirement.
Okay. All right, and let's see here. All right. In regards to the fees, and I understand where you're going, you know, that $190 really isn't going to make a difference there. That is going to be time, though. I mean, if we have calls, will our code enforcement go down there at all? If someone says, you know, we've got a problem, can you go check it out?
Yes, just like we answer all, all calls that we get. We respond.
Sure, so my, right, so my question is, if all of a sudden this just started getting overwhelming, we would need probably more staff, or it would take more time. And that's where I'm looking at the fees. Perhaps it's not the time to actually set up the permit, but what the cost could be down the line with us having to maybe put more staff on if this becomes, you know, more, you know, more of an abundance of calls coming in there and people, you know, making comments, and they have to go down. So I'm just trying to get all of this, obviously, you know, we're, we understand this is a law, and we need to do what best we can. But again, safety to me is one of my priorities. And, and I know it's, again, one of those, this is the law. I'm going to leave it like that, and I'm going to get any other comments.
I would just like to make a comment regarding Councilmember Jennings' comment regarding the fees. And I completely understand where you're coming from, and I don't like taxes, and I think we need to keep them as low as possible and not charge when we don't need to. I think in this situation, though, what we have is we have a certain, a small population that could be taking a lot of staff time. And that's, the cost of that staff time, if we don't charge the fee and the hours, for the hours that are used to issue the permits, if we don't, then that, that staff time is being subsidized by all the other taxpayers in our community who are not seeking a permit. So I think it's a burden to the other taxpayers in our community, and it's really not fair to them. And if there's no fee, then there's, some could see there's no skin in the game. So our staff could be inundated with permit requests for someone wanting to set up a card table, you know, next week in front of one of our shopping centers. And then someone, if there's no fee, we could really see a lot of permit requests coming in, where I think having that fee for what is the actual staff time that it takes to issue the permit, we'll make someone give it a second thought on whether or not they are, they want to pursue that way of going into business. So I don't think it's fair to the rest of the taxpayers in our city to subsidize that. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, can I?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you. I, you know, that was part of my analysis. To be blunt, I get it, and I understand that. My preference on dealing with taxes like that, which is how I view it, is that if that became a problem, I have a diocese sitting in front of us that we can always return to and correct that problem. I don't anticipate that we're going to have an inundation. This law's been in place for some time. We haven't been inundated, and even if everyone who was currently doing it applied, it's really not that onerous. And so my, I guess my preference would be, let's start on the side of not causing that to be an issue. We touted almost every opportunity that we are business-friendly, that we are open to business. This is a law of the state of California, so therefore I guess I need to accommodate it in our business-friendly way. And I was trying to find a way that eliminates that as, you know, one of the things. I hear you on the barriers and the burdens, because that resonates with me. But I do think the permit process is the barrier and the burden that is contemplated by the legislature. And I tell you what, if we get inundated, I'll be the first one to come back and say that we got to recapture $190, and let's do that. I just don't like starting with that. And I went through the list of things that, that, this very short list, it's 24, but if you read it, it's a funny list to read. In the municipal code of the businesses that we do charge, one of which is, I think, hog farming, another one is, for reasons I don't understand, dance studios, and a few others that just don't seem to correlate to anything. So my preference, and by the way, I'm told that primarily we're not charging those fees. So it's not like, even though they are rules, if you have a dance, and barber shops are also charged a fee, or should be charged a fee, and we're not charging that fee. We're just letting that go and issuing the permits. So if that's the case, I think we should be consistent with who we are and what we're actually doing, and I think no fee makes some sense. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilmember Reins.
So I have a question. So when these sidewalk vendors register and get their permit, obviously, there's a sales tax that they have to charge if they have, because they have to have a business license in order to operate. Is that correct? Where does that sales tax go? And is that something we can recapture?
Yes, they're required to show that they have a state license to, as a seller permit. And then, yes, the activity, because it's a sale that occurs in the city, it should be attributed as occurring in the city, and the city should get a share of that indirectly back to the city.
So does our ordinance have anything in it that would require them to, to get that back to us or not? Because that, I mean, we're talking about fees here, and I tend to agree with my colleague Jennings, that we shouldn't be charging any kind of a fee, because we don't charge any other business to do business in Laguna Niguel. So I'm just wondering.
Sales tax, if it's, as they are required to collect and remit to the state, is then transmitted down to the counties and the cities by the state financial government systems. So the particular vendor isn't charged with directly paying that sales tax to the city. It occurs more indirectly.
So how, so would there be a way that we would require them to report that they did their business here, so that it would come back to us?
They have to have a certification of a California seller's permit pursuant to the Revenue and Taxation Code, and that has to be maintained for the duration of the vendor's city permit. Because of that, then they are regulated and required to remit on a periodic basis all their sales tax to the state. And so then, that would be the methodology. If they don't, then the state Franchise Tax Board would be looking and following up on ensuring that that has occurred.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think you might have misunderstood her question, at least as I understood it. Is there any guarantee that the sales tax, because they're a floating vendor, they're a roaming vendor, is there any way to determine whether or not the sales tax is flowing back to the city of Laguna Niguel, because they did the business here?
Yeah, they have a business, let's say, address in a different city, but they're actually doing their activity here. Again, that is a matter that the Franchise Tax Board looks at very carefully to ensure that they have accurate reporting of where the sales activity occurs. They will periodically do audits to ensure that's the case. And certainly, the city's own sales tax auditing firm can follow up and look into records of sales tax paid to the state that really originate in the city. And if it's not being designated as occurring in the city, then the city can initiate with the Franchise Tax Board a way to have that enforced.
We also do audits through HDL, our sales tax consultant, to make sure we're capturing all the sales tax, and that happens periodically.
So there would be.
Yes, there is a mechanism.
So we would be able to find one.
We do that now with all of our businesses.
And then I know that one of the concerns about the fees were, what about compliance and stuff? But we do have within the code written that there would be fines for non-compliance. So if it became a staffing issue where more staff was used, there would be compliance issue fines for the vendors. So I feel like if they're not complying, then, then they would be charged the fees, and I think those are fair. But I think, moving forward, since we have to do this, and we have to have the vendors, it's the law, the state law, and we have to comply, I would support not having the fee also.
And if you could just, on that part, in regards to fines, what is, what are the fines, and what is the protocol? Perhaps you get a call, and, you know, they find out that they haven't gotten a permit?
Sure, any complaint of that type, if the city were to follow up, of course, we're always education first. It's a matter of complying, complying with the relevant codes. If we have an issue where we are unable to gain voluntary compliance, then our standard enforcement protocol would, I believe the first citation is $100, and then it's $200 and $500. And it can get to the point where it's a daily citation.
So just days the same as what we had before with this?
Absolutely.
All right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read. Any other comments?
Just a couple of.
Please.
A couple of comments and clarifications. Well, my view on the whole thing is, we have to go back to the history of Senate Bill 946, what happened in the city of South Pasadena, city of West Hollywood, city of Santa Monica, city of Pasadena, and the biggest of all, city of Los Angeles. Socioeconomically, demographically, we are different. The reason that they drafted SB 946 was that because they were getting a lot of complaints, specifically and explicitly, city of South Pasadena, that from a legal standing, they were going crazy, there were lawsuits, that the city did not want to see all these vendors showing up at different segments, at different sidewalks. It was creating all kinds of chaos, and the health issue, and a lot of other things. And that instigated the lawmakers in Sacramento to come up with a global Senate bill for the entire state. We happen to be a law-abiding municipal corporation in the state, so by default, we have to adhere to that, and I have no issues with that, even though I'm in disagreement in concept on the whole thing. So we are going to be moving forward because we have to. With regard to the fees, permit fees are, to me, taxes, but then at the same time, I get very sensitive and sometimes emotional that we want to keep the integrity of this beautiful city, sustain the beautiful quality of life that we've had, that we've enjoyed over the years. And in order to continue that, then, from that perspective, I have no issues, and I have no standing that the $190 would be creating hardship for a potential business person to come to this city to conduct a sidewalk vending business. So I have, that's okay with me. The number of hours of the staff, I don't know if really two or two and a half hours that was given to us is the right number. I think it's less than that unless you're going to look at the traffic control plans, what size of truck they're going to bring in, where they're going to be positioning that, is it going to be stationary? Is it going to be dynamic, moving around? It depends on the application, because I've reviewed other cities, and I've seen that, like South Pasadena, West Hollywood, that because they get so many different activities, people move in from other cities. Santa Monica is the best example, too, or all the coastal cities, that I can go on and on that I reviewed. So from that perspective, the 190, I have no issues with that. And I'm happy that I heard from our Director of Community Development that we are going to be requiring that they have to pay, or they have to have, you know, insurance liability coverages, because we don't want the city to be, you know, to be defending someone that is not, does not even have any coverages. So that's okay with me. $40 is not much, you know, from a whole business perspective. But again, in conclusion, I don't want to change the integrity of the city by, by reducing that 190, because honestly, I want to see it as a kind of deterrent, because look at the way this city has been functioning, has been running. You know, I've been living here for 30 years, and I've been very happy, and I want to see, keep it like that, so that external forces would not change the way we do business in this city, even though we are a business-friendly city. We welcome any other, you know, businesses to come here, to move here, to excel, because their success would be our success.
Thank you, Mayor Pretten.
I just had a question. I, I'm counting, I'm counting opinions, and I've got two on potentially no fees and two on, different to that. So I guess the question is, I'm happy to make a motion, Mayor, but I don't want to divide the council off the $190 fee, because I think we all want the permits. I heard that unanimously. So if you express your opinion on that, I'll make the appropriate motion, so.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
I would like to stay with the permit, $190. Again, as you said, we can always bring it back, but let's start there, and then we'll see how it goes. And if we're finding that it's not needed, then we can, we can step back. But if all of a sudden we find that there is a need, and we're using more, you know, code enforcement and labor and so forth, then that'll, that'll come in there.
Good, thank you. And I did want to place my, I did not want to place myself in a no vote on this, because I'm not going to not approve a permitting of this process over the $190 fee. I just wanted to make that point, and I appreciate the council's comments on that. My motion is that we would approve item number two on the public hearing calendar, and I'll let the mayor read the urgency ordinance and all that. I would, I would prefer that it be on the emergency ordinance side, rather than the, I forget what the alternative one, the regular ordinance. So my motion is to approve the item with the emergency ordinance and to remove paragraph D from the preamble.
Excuse me, Mayor Davies. Did Attorney Ennis give his opinion on removing paragraph D? I don't know if that's to keep us aligned with the state?
Be happy to give you some thoughts on that. The ordinance has, in my opinion, adequate findings to justify the rather robust regulations. I think it's defensible without recital D. There was a reason for including it, which is, basically, this is a long ordinance. This is a lot of regulations. We also want to create and show a record that this ordinance is not intended to be a complete preclusion or deterrent. We need to defend it, and so having that finding would have been an added, additional basis to show to a court that this is a, you know, we're not intending to prohibit and blanketly ban these activities from the city. That stated, however, in talking to Councilmember Jennings, as we've already discussed, there are many other findings that fully support this ordinance, and I think it can be defended without recital D.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I made that motion with, and my motion involves removing preamble D.
And that would be to preamble D, which is recital D to both the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, and then go ahead and read, correct?
Correct.
So with what you have, where is that? If I keep going, you'll just stop me where I have to make the change on there? All right, great. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and read the, let me get this here. I'm going to go ahead and read, we've got a motion here. I'm going to read the waiver of the full reading. Make any amendments to and adopt urgency ordinance number 2020-206 by title amending the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code to regulate sidewalk vending consistent with state law declaring the urgency and immediate effectiveness pursuant to Government Code Sections 36934 and 36937, and making a determination of exemption under sequel in connection. Therefore, I have a second already. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carried. All right, then we're going to go into, can I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation, approve the waiver of the full reading, make any amendments to and introduce ordinance number 2020-207 by title amending Laguna Niguel Municipal Code to regulate sidewalk vending consistent with state law? consistent with state law and making a determination of exemption under sequel in connection, therefore, and direct that the proposed ordinance with any changes to it be placed on the agenda for the August 4th, 2020 city council meeting and adopt the ordinance at that meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Any, first? Great.
Sure.
All right, all right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
And Mayor Davies, while you're going on to this next thing, just for the record, and both of those adoptions or and introduction was with the deletion of recital D in section one of both of those ordinances.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation of adopt resolution number 2020-1334 establishing and adopting fees and charge, charges for sidewalk vending permits?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is a public hearing, item number three. This is public hearing to consider ordinance number 2020-205 amending the nuisance provision of the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code. Community Director Oduña, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Contract Planner Amber Gregg will be providing the presentation on this item.
Thank you.
Hello again. So our next one has to do with a comprehensive update to our nuisance division of our municipal code. And the purpose for this is because the city's original nuisance provisions were adopted in 1990, shortly after the city was incorporated. And at that time, the city was going through a lot of development. Now that we're mainly a built-out city, it's a good time to look back on our provisions and make sure that they're going to sustain us through maintenance and maintaining the quality of life within our community. In addition, during the strategic plan process, it was identified by residents that maintaining the quality of life was a high priority and therefore, in the action plan, it had also included nuisance provisions and updating them as part of the action plan process to maintaining that quality of life. Nuisance provisions, when we looked at our existing ones and surveying surrounding cities, we did identify that our provisions would benefit from added clarity, a broader scope, and additional enforcement tools for our community preservation officers. So in general, the purpose and intent of the updates are to further define what in fact a nuisance is, also clarify regulations to promote maintenance and safety of properties, to provide additional enforcement tools, and enhance and clarify our administrative procedures to better remedy ongoing violations. I want to make it clear that most of the time, a significant amount of the time, violations are rectified just through the education program of our community preservation officers and the administrative procedures are for those rare occasions when nuisances aren't abated immediately. So the proposed ordinance provides a definition for key terms, that way everybody has a common understanding. It also includes explicit language defining what constitutes a nuisance. There's elaboration of our existing ten identified nuisances within the municipal code. In addition to that, we also introduced seven new categories of nuisances. And then finally, we included a general code compliance provision that just says any code that the city is responsible of enacting has to be complied with. In addition, we have delineation of enforcement and abatement process, not to make sure that everybody knows what the process is and that due rights are followed, and that there is an appeal process should somebody wish to do that. But the purpose of all of these is to assist the city's efforts to improve, preserve, and maintain the quality, maintain Laguna Niguel's high quality of life that we all enjoy. So with that, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed comprehensive updates to the nuisance division and introduce ordinance number 2020-205 as stated in the staff report. And before I, and I just want to notify you that on the dais, there are two minor revisions to the proposed ordinance. The first has to do with a clarification for consistency purposes. The ordinance before you tonight has the city manager appointing the hearing officer and there was a section of the code that still said city council, so that clarification is being made just for consistency purposes. And the second item has to do with utility cabinets. Currently, our code addresses utility cabinets maintenance only on arterial highways and this would extend to the entire city. So that way, if we did have an issue with a utility cabinet, we could go ahead and clean it up through this process. All right, that concludes staff's presentation and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your staff report. I'm going to move ahead and go with the public hearing. We'll open that now. City Clerk Gomez, are there any public comments on this item?
No, mayor, there are no comments.
All right, then we will close public hearing and I'm going to move it over to the council. Comments or questions?
Okay.
Councilwoman Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say my appreciation to the staff for putting this together is rather comprehensive. We've been sorting through the municipal code and this is the next one in line. It's definitely timely. It's, you know, one of these things we could have done a long time ago and here we are and it's a good thing to do. I had two conversations with staff today and I appreciate you all spending your time doing it. The only clarification I had was that on page 12, there's an item nine called infestation, which talks about whether, when buildings and structures shall be kept free from insect and rodent infestation, sounds pretty good to me. Buildings or other structures in which insects or rodents are found shall be promptly fumigated to exterminate and or otherwise eliminate the infestation. And then it goes on to talk about some other things. The only thing I wanted to carve out on that is as it applies to honeybees. This, they fall into the category of things that should be fumigated to extermination and I think that there's a better way to do that. There's a rather robust campaign in the country right now to try to preserve the honeybees. They're critical to our way of life. We don't exist as a species without them because they pollinate everything and I have had some personal experience with this, with bees on my home and others in my neighborhood, so I know for sure that this is a thing. So the backstory of that is, is that while all of that is true and I support this, the passage of this, we've also been told that there'll be another revisit on this and coming back to the code to try to tie all of this into one or more future statutes. I was going to ask city attorney Ennis if he could at least summarize what it was that we talked about today.
Right, and certainly, community development director Oduña can follow up, but it's my understanding that the county itself will be coming up with recommendations about bee keeping and bee elimination provisions in municipal codes in Orange County. And that'll be coming out in the fall. And when that does occur, we'll be updating the appropriate title to the code to address that particular issue. And as we do that, we'll come back to this particular provision and make adjustments as necessary to make a cross-reference to what ends up being that bee-specific provision in the code.
Right. Thank you. And I realize this is way off in the weeds, if you'll forgive the pun, but I do think it's important. I've read enough of this to know that we should probably find a way to not exterminate them all. It's not good for our health. So with that, I have no other comments and appreciate staff's time today to help sort through that.
Councilmembers, any more comments or questions? All right. Done. All right, can I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation waive the full reading, making any amendments to and induce ordinance number 2020-205 by title amending Title 11, Public Morals, Safety and Welfare Division 14, nuisance and making a determination of exemption under sequel in connection, therefore, and direct that the proposed ordinance with any changes to it be placed on the agenda for the August 4th, 2020 city council meeting and adopt the ordinance at this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
And I'm fairly certain you did that with one breath, by the way. That was impressive, so.
I could have kept going. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion moved. All right, moving to discussion item. Our next item is discussion item number one and that is Terranova Homeowners Association permit parking request. Public Works Director Scott, please provide our staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a permit parking request from the Terranova Homeowners Association. The HOA is a 50-unit, single-family residential neighborhood located in the northeast portion of the city and includes three public streets, Forense Street, Palermo Street, and Vittoria Street. Surrounding land uses include previously approved permit parking districts, Hidden Hills Elementary School, Hidden Hills condominiums, and Laguna Serrano Apartments. On September 9th, 2019, staff received a letter from the HOA requesting the city to develop a permit parking district. The HOA requested, request included a signed petition of support from 67% of the residential lots as required by the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code. Typical concerns shared by the residents included parking overflow from adjacent multifamily, illegal parking on curb corners and blocking of driveways, trash, and nighttime noise. Staff's parking analysis supported the permit parking request out of the possible 52 parking spaces. Overnight observations indicated there were on average 36 vehicles parked on the three streets, leaving only 16 parking spaces available to the 50 households within the HOA. With adjacent permit parking districts to the east and west, it seems that unpermitted vehicles are spilling over to unrestricted streets parking within the Terranova Homeowners Association. On February 26, 2020, the Traffic and Transportation Commission reviewed the permit parking request and recommended that the city council approve the request to develop a permit parking district on the three streets. The city council may establish permit parking by resolution. This evening, staff is recommending that the city council find that overnight parking on Forense, Palermo, and Vittoria Streets substantially interferes with the normal and expected use of available public street parking spaces at regular, daily, and weekly intervals. The city council approve and authorize staff to develop a permit parking district on Forense Street, Palermo Street, and Vittoria Street within the Terranova Homeowners Association from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Adopt Resolution 2020-1335 establishing a permit parking district on Forense Street, Palermo Street, and Vittoria Street and establishing a bail amount for permit parking violations on these streets. And finally, direct police services to provide permit parking enforcement as time and personnel permit. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. City Clerk Gomez, do we have any public submitted comments?
No, mayor, no comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to move on to city council members. Any questions? Concerns?
Just a comment.
Please.
I have driven through that neighborhood at night and it is packed with cars and these residents definitely need it. It's kind of like they're squeezed in between two other HOAs that already have the permit parking, so you can see where the spillover is happening in, on this very tiny HOA, so it is definitely needed as they are packed in there.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the staff recommendations.
Okay, item one through four?
One through four.
I'll second it with comments, though.
All in favor?
Well, I was going to, I was going to make a comment, though.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, mayor. I wanted to say thank you, first of all, to all the dozens of residents that signed the petitions and ran the gauntlet of what it takes to get a parking permit application through the city. It's difficult. This was approved by Traffic and Transportation Committee way back in February. Not much has happened between February and now, so I don't know why it got delayed. I'm kidding, of course, because everything has happened. Seems like that was nine years ago in February. So I just wanted to say apologies for all the parking issues you've had since February. We got to this as soon as we could and I wanted to say thank you to all the residents who did that, because it's, it was difficult to do and your patience has been appreciated. So with that, I second it and now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passed. Just a quick question on that. Since we're limited our services right now in city hall in regards to those residents getting permits, what's the process going to be?
Honorable Mayor, we have considered that. We will be mailing out notices to all the residents, which will include instructions on how to set up appointments with the Public Works Department staff in order to receive their decals.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, that concludes our discussion items, so we'll now move on to council reports and city manager report. Councilmember Rains?
I don't know why, it feels like it's been forever since we've been here. It was just a few weeks ago, but I just wanted to say thank you to Chief McDaniel. I had a resident reach out to me on a personal issue and I appreciate the follow-up that you did. She was really happy about that and I wanted to say thank you. And that's it. We've just been mostly having some Zoom meetings. The main thing is the legislation that's going to be coming up on our November ballot, so I'm sure I'll have a little bit more updates on that in our August 4th meeting. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jennings?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to report to you that the, you may recall, way, way back in the long ago time of 2019, the city decided to join the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. The purpose of that endeavor was a piece of legislation created to create a trust for the purpose of identifying funds, identifying projects, and contributing meaningfully to the development of low-income housing and permanent supportive housing. At the time, the county identified 2,700 units that needed to be built. They've identified more than that of low-income housing that needs to be built. And there was some, I should say, that there was some reluctance on behalf of the city to join such a thing, because we were worried about the motives and the meanings behind all of that. The good news is, is that we are now just past a year, we just passed it last week, of having been in the Housing Finance Trust. So I thought it might be a good time to take a moment to update you on what has occurred during that time. It went from a completely cold start, meaning zero money, zero members, to having 24 members and $25 million in the bank in a single year. We funded 14 projects in our very first NOFA, our Notice of Funding Availability. That went out, the projects came in, they applied, we got far more applications than we had money for. We then set about a very, very robust lobbying system with the help of many cities, the counties, and some private consultants to identify additional funds. And we've identified recurring revenues of over $25 million that'll come in every year on our way towards funding as many as we can. It is a massive, huge win for the county. It's one of those things that, for whatever reason, worked right and were unique. I asked, I asked the lobbyists in our meeting this past week whether or not anyone else is doing this type of thing and they says, every time we walk into any office and it's regardless of party or any other inclination, they are blown away by how well it's been going, that some county like Orange could pull this together, because basically, all we ever really get is plurality in Orange County and this time, we seem to get it right. Our numbers of the cities that are participating is increasing, which is somewhat rare. There was a pool, there was a movement maybe five months ago that some of the cities were considering backing out. That was right before we issued our NOFA and they were encouraged to stay in and sure enough, that was good. The applications that we got were in all three of the spas, which are the service planning areas across the county. I'm not a big fan of the spa concept, but I do note that they were equally balanced, so that they're not, you know, isolated in any one community. So it is, it's one of those, one of those great experiences in government that actually did some good immediately and was, I think, well thought out. I was, and I think on behalf of the city, we were lucky to have the chairmanship last year when all of this was going on. I was very pleased to have had Southern Orange County input into that and I was frankly blown away this past week when they asked me to do that again. So unanimously approved to be the chair again, so Laguna Niguel once again is going to be the voice of moving that forward. And if you'd asked me two years ago if we would be sitting in that seat, I would have, I would have had, it would have been a resounding no and some other comments, but I'm just as honored as I could be to get to do it again. And off we go and I think we're going to see some real, some real benefit from this coming up. The big, the big downside is, and I just wanted to make sure you understood, is that with COVID-19, there was over a billion dollars which had been allocated for this funding that the governor was, was putting out and we were well positioned to receive a big number on that. We'd asked for 35 million of it and that seemed probable. Now that COVID-19 has come and this has been allocated, the governor is having the difficult time of trying to reprioritize housing into COVID-19 budgets. But because we are so far ahead of this curve, we are like the only entity that's really set up to make this type of ask and we're getting very positive feedback on that. So when we go back to the legislature, when they're back in session, we expect to have those easy conversations and have something on the governor's desk this year. So that's that. I wanted to say thank you to the staff for, for taking one on the chin by continuing to work at home and having to deal with all that that's been. It's been kind of nasty and I get that, that you have to do that for so long, but it is greatly appreciated and it showed up in your staff report and this was a rather, we haven't had a really complex staff meeting in a while, so this was, this was impressive. And then just wanted to say happy summer and I hope even though there's COVID-19 restrictions everywhere, that you guys are able to relax some with your families and maybe set some time, set aside some time for that. time, set aside some time for that. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for taking on that role as Chair. That was something that the ACCLC worked with other legislators, and we got, it was somewhat of a pilot program, and the fact that it's doing so well, hopefully other counties will, you know, take that in mind, especially right now when we are going to be looking to build more housing and so forth, so great job. Thank you. Let's move on with Councilmember Genaway.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it seems like we are in a time warp here. It's like, how long ago was that? It seemed like, was it a year ago? No, two weeks ago anyways. A couple of weeks ago, we had 4th of July, so really enjoyed the virtual fireworks and getting to see all the bands that we have enjoyed at the park over the years. And that, that virtual fireworks display had a lot of energy, so it was, at the end of the day, I thought, gosh, we could enjoy all the 4th of July activities from home. We had the flyover, we had the cavalcade. Thank you, Police Services, and also to OCFA for participating in the cavalcade. I know our residents who saw that enjoyed it. I'd also like to remind our residents that your library is operating. The building is not open, but you can still check out books and DVDs and eBooks and a lot of, lot of materials, so please utilize your library. There's lots of good information there, and also a lot of resources online with online classes, and it's all yours for free at ocpl.org. And then, you know, we sit on different county boards, and we've been enjoying, it took a while to get used to, but having the Zoom meetings. I mean, now it seems like every meeting I have is a Zoom meeting. For some of the county advisory boards, which are citizen representation, it did take a while for that to happen, because they needed to have an approved platform. But for our residents who are interested in any of the different boards that the county has, now that the meetings are via Zoom, you can attend those meetings, because they're open to the public, from the comfort of your home. You don't need to drive to Santa Ana. So take a look at, or ask any of us on any of the different boards we sit on, and we can share that information with you on how to participate or, you know, attend a Zoom meeting to see what's going on. Councilwoman Jennings went back to 2019. I'm going to go back to 2018. Okay. And the reason I am is because of a certain item that we approved in our check register, and it's an expenditure that we've made, and I want to highlight it to our residents, because so many of you have expressed your concern regarding our businesses, our business community, and your city council is very focused on that. And we are concerned about our businesses and providing the support that we can. We've done that with allowing restaurants to go, you know, use outdoor space, also different businesses can do that. We have a drive-in theater coming in one of the parking lots. But in 2018, that's when we formed the, the city council formed the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee, and we sought out professional services to assist with recruiting businesses to Laguna Nigal, and at that time, we hired the Retail Coach. And the Retail Coach continues to provide value as they work with our community development staff and also with the property managers and property owners of the shopping centers in our city. And we know that as we move forward through the COVID-19 pandemic, it's changed retail. It's changed retail today, in the future, for what it was yesterday. And the Retail Coach is addressing this in their work with the city. A healthy retail community is vital to our city, because approximately one quarter of our general fund revenue is from sales tax. And that sales tax is what provides law enforcement services, your roads, your parks, sports fields, so that's how we fund the operations of the city. So a healthy retail community is vital to the health of this community. So I just want to draw your attention to, we just, you know, approved the funding for another, I believe, is it a six-month contract? Or I'll have to go back, six-month or a year? A year, a one-year contract? So we are continuing to work with our coach and also with the retail community, because that is, our business community is one of the priorities of the city council. And I just want our residents to know that, because so many of you have expressed concern to us about the businesses in our city. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended Southern California Association of Governments July 2 meeting on behalf of the six South Orange County cities. The only takeaway for this city council is that we were informed that Governor Newsom did not postpone ratification of SB 743, and every city in California is obligated to go through the new metric, which is VMT, not LOS, or the typical delay that we use as a measure for potential adverse impact of any proposal, any project, or any transportation infrastructure. So having said that, I wanted to bring it to the attention of our city staff, that this is the best time for our city. I do realize that when I was at the meeting, obviously via Zoom, a lot of city's representatives were saying that they had written letters to the governor, including our city that I mentioned, that we were against the, the adaptation of SB 743 effective July 1, because of the potential impact of it, but, but because of the dismay that we have, we were informed that we have to, every project that comes to the city, if the processing, if the application is after July 1, then the cities as municipal corporations are obligated to use the VMT measure rather than LOS or delay. Now that we have our city center project on hold, I take it, and any potential development or any mixed use that may potentially come out of the federal building campus, then all those, we have to reconsider how we are going to be proceeding with them. We have to look at pros and cons, because if, the reason that VMT was generated, because it was spearheaded by the state of, state of Oregon more than any other states, and they did a pilot program by the federal government, and they realized that, well, it may be a good way of taking care of all those massive infill projects that a lot of cities such as San Francisco or LA have, that this is a good way to do it. But for cities, for suburban cities like, like our city, that we are a master-planned community, therefore, we don't have that much of, you know, infills like other grown-up or old cities. Therefore, we ought to be very careful how we are going to be proceeding with the transportation, traffic impact assessment of those, because it's not going to be traffic impact anymore. It's going to be VMT, and we have to see that if we are going to be establishing any kind of exchange program with our neighboring cities, so that we can take advantage of a collaborative approach, rather than penalizing any potential new developer that would be coming to this city, that want to do business in this city. So the well-being of our city is at, is job number one for all of us, but at the same time, we want to make sure that not only we are business-friendly, but also environmentally speaking, we adhere to all the requirements that VMT would bring with it, which is obviously to reduce the greenhouse gas and, and other factors. But at the end, in my view, we, as a city, we are going to be penalized regardless, because the majority of our residents, myself included, I don't work from home, I have to drive to my office, and my office is not in this city. And I'm sure a lot of other people would be doing that then, because we drive, then we are going to get penalized as a part of that. We are not like those grown-up cities like, you know, like LA or Santa Monica, that they have train system, that they can take advantage of it, they, they have all those facilities all over their cities, so we are exception, but our, our neighboring cities happen to be, you know, in the same boat with us. So with that said, I just wanted to make sure that it would be a priority for the city staff to move forward with adaptation. Obviously, it has to come to the city council for ratification, so that we approve it. And also, I suggest that like other cities, that we keep LOS and delay as a part of the, the document that you're going to be presenting to us, because we want to safeguard the city, we want to safeguard the well-being of our people. So by having those indices included, i.e., again, I repeat, delay and LOS, then we can, we can visualize the potential adverse impact of those proposed actions, so we, as a city council, we can make a better determination, rather than those fuzzy numbers of VMT, how people are going to be starting their trips, production, attraction, and what have you. So I don't want to elaborate on other meetings at TCA or OCOC, because I just want to talk about the highlights of any kind of meeting that we present to the city that would be beneficial to this body. Thank you.
Thank you, and just on that, VMT for the public, it's because of mild travel. And the difference is, right now, you're paying at the pump, so that's where your gas tax is. So they don't care where you drive, it's just how much gas you're getting, you're getting taxed on this. What this will do, will actually tax you on the mileage. And so again, it does unfortunately affect even lower income, because they are traveling a lot of times from, you know, from Riverside or different areas and to doing a lot long travel, then when you have a, a large city and you're staying within, and again, you have a good transit, which we really don't have down here, so that is a concern, and we just have to keep an eye on it. So thank you with that. Appreciate it. I just want to, I want to thank, first of all, and I say this, our city manager, our deputy city manager, all the staff, you guys have really just stepped up over these past few months. And we get a lot of, lot of letters from the public, you know, they're at home, there's concerns going on, and they address them within 24 hours. Sometimes they call, sometimes they email, and all of you have been so good to respond, and that's, that's really what the public wants to hear, is that they know that they're being heard, so thank you for that. I want to thank our community directors as well. With the CARE Act funding, we finally got the funding, which was great. This was a grant from the federal. It was 1 point, it was 15 million for our district, District 5, and we were able to help out a lot of businesses, a lot of nonprofits, where they each got $10,000 in grants, so this wasn't a loan, and they were able to put that, hopefully, maybe just to help them out in regards to rent or lease, wherever they're at. So hopefully got them over, we'll, we'll see what's going to come next, but thank you for all your hard work, because a lot of these things were not easy to understand, and you really did walk them through, and that made a big difference, so I appreciate that. All right, with that, I'm going to bring it, take it over to our city manager.
Thank you. Since VMT was brought up, I'm going to ask, I have a few updates, but Community Development Director Orjuna, can you provide an update about what we're doing about the VMT and the timing of all that for us?
My thing, I don't want to, I don't want to get onto an item that isn't on the agenda, but.
Just an update for the council.
Yeah, we, we are working with Public Works staff and, and our outside consultant on development of VMT regulations, and we should have that on a council agenda soon. To the Mayor Potem's comments, you're correct, it will impact pending and future projects. So any project in the pipeline will have to be evaluated based on those criteria, including the city center project if it moves forward.
Great, thank you so much.
I have a few COVID updates and a non-COVID update. So for COVID updates, we have worked collaboratively with the YMCA to approve the relocation of their fitness equipment and classes outdoors with the new state orders, and that's going very well, I'm happy to report. We also have over 20 restaurants that are utilizing the pilot program that the city council approved for outdoor, use of outdoor space and flexible outdoor dining. We have approved a request for the drive-in movie theater from Regal Theaters at the Center for Rancho Nigal for four consecutive weekends, starting July 24, from 8:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. So that will be exciting and fun for the community. We've just received our first request with the new orders this week for outdoor operations of a hair salon, and we expect more of those requests to come, since that's now allowed under the state orders. Regarding testing, there's been some good, positive updates on that, and I want to share with you, the county's newest COVID testing location opened last week at the Anaheim Convention Center. The site is open Wednesday through Sunday. Currently, they have capacity to conduct 500 tests a day, and the ultimate goal at 1,200 a day. The testing location has, and this is unique, it has its own lab, so they've been able to process the test results within 48 hours. So, and this is a no-cost testing location for Orange County residents who are experiencing COVID symptoms, can't get a test through their medical provider, or meet public health criteria for priority testing, which is healthcare workers, first responders, workers in congregate living, individuals with someone, living with someone with COVID-19, and essential workers. The county is working on a second location similar to this, and they hope to announce that location maybe even later this week. The county, last week, the county board approved a COVID-safe restaurant program, and this is being funded through the money that the county received with $10 million of federal funding, and this is to designate restaurants that are COVID-safe, if they follow all the criteria, they post their state checklist, they post their attestations, and they are in compliance with all health orders, they will get a sticker, if you will, some kind of symbol, so everyone knows that they're COVID-safe, and they will, it also comes with $1,000 from the county to help them pay for PPE and cleaning supplies. So on non-COVID items, it was mentioned before about our goat grazing program, and I wanted to provide you with an update about that. This year, we had two locations, Reef Node Park and La Hermosa Park, and I'm happy to report, the program was successful, with the goats removing the weeds on a total of 14.1 acres of park space, meeting our OCFA requirements for creating the fire protection buffer. There were an average of 150 to 300 visitors per day, depending upon the day of the week and the location, which was fantastic. So I know there's a lot of pictures floating around out there with pictures of cute goats, we like that. We're going to be recommending continuing this program in the future. Public Works staff is in the process of identifying additional locations to utilize the goats for the weed abatement program, and we'll come back to the council towards the end of the year for next year's program and recommended locations. So I just want to share happy news with you.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to adjourn at 8:25. Thank you, and have a good week.